Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well. This is your Select Board Meeting Minute for July 10th. Meeting began with the continuation of a public hearing on the special town meeting warrant article. The board then discussed plans for hosting a procedural defect meeting on September 5th.
In May, we did happen to miss one of the 24-hour posting deadlines. However, when we did petition the court, we did let the judge know that, and we let the judge know that we would be seeking to hold a procedural defect meeting, special town meeting, in September. So we would open a deliberative session to introduce the change in the notice that we missed, and then we close the deliberative session, and then we have to open the polls for one hour. People can come and vote if there's a question or concern. It's a yes or no vote.
The voters of the town vote yes to accept that we've made this correction.
Correct.
Got it.
Members of the Community Power Aggregation Committee provided a report on Exeter Community Power, highlighting the quarter-two energy supply rates that are even lower than the initial launch.
Unitel's default rate is thirteen, a little over thirteen cents a kilowatt hour. And if you look down to the very bottom, the Community Power Coalition New Hampshire rates, the Granite Basic, is about eleven cents. So there's still a fairly significant discrepancy between the lowest rate that Unitel is charging and what Community Power is charging.
You know, we started out with Granite Basic being fifteen cents plus, and now Clean 100, which is 100% renewable energy, is about the same price. So, you know, if you liked your last three months, you can maintain it and do something better for the environment.
Exactly.
Parks and Recreation received a grant totaling $841,240 from the Community Development Finance Authority. These funds will be used to make improvements to the new Rec Building at 10 Hampton Road toward the goal of creating a multi-generational community center.
We're excited. Now the hard work is to begin.
Congratulations on the application and the award. That's great.
Next, Town Manager Russ Dean presented the 2023 Classification and Compensation Plan for non-union town employees. According to the consulting company, Hexter's increase in pay places it in the 75th percentile for town employee compensation. This means that Exeter will offer higher wages than 75% of similar communities in order to make Exeter more competitive in the job market and to retain more employees.
We needed to do this. It's been almost 10 years since the town has looked at grades and wages, and particularly post-pandemic, with the private sector being what it is. We've lost some talented individuals, but we still have incredibly talented staff that we would like to retain.
I will just echo my own thanks and our thanks to our employees, without whom the town would not run, and we need to recognize and appreciate and pay them accordingly.
During the Town Manager's Report, Russ Dean updated the town on the status of several items, including property taxes and assessment ratios. To watch the full Select Board Meeting and hundreds of hours of content, visit our Exeter TV YouTube page. The next Select Board Meeting will be on July 24th. See you there. Two major events happened last week related to the sewer siphons project. First, on Tuesday, July 11th, the town hosted a special deliberative session to discuss a sole warrant article to finish the project. Voters joined the Select Board and town staff in the historic Town Hall to hear a presentation from interim Public Works Director Paul Vlasic about how the project progressed to where it is today.
Good evening once again, and welcome to the July 24th, 2023 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. I'd like to say good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my colleagues on the board, respective town staff, those in attendance this evening, and certainly those watching at home on TV. I'd like to start by introducing the board. Apologies, Vice Chair Selectwoman Molly Cowan had a conflict this evening and is unable to attend. But to my right, we have Selectman Dan Shartran. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
To my left, our Clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
And Selectwoman Nancy Belanger. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine. Good evening.
Good evening.
Our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel. Good evening. And my name is Nico Papakosndis. The first item of business this evening is one of the fun parts of our job. The Chief Poole, and over the last couple of years, he has allowed us to share in the swearing-in of new officers and also promoted officers. So this evening, we have the swearing-in of police officers Caleb Daniels and Eric Warden. And with that, Chief, I'll turn it over to you and our Town Clerk, Andy Kohler. Good evening.
Excellent. Good evening. Thank you all. And thank you, everyone, for coming. It's super important for the families and for the town of Exeter to see this. I would invite both officers, Daniel and Warden, in. Officer Eric Warden grew up in Maine and attended Portland High School. He then went on to receive a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from UMass Dartmouth. While at UMass, Eric received academic honors of magna cum laude in all academic honors while on the collegiate swim team. From there, he went on to attend Merrimack College and recently graduated with a master's degree in criminology and a Mass Law Enforcement Officer Certification. Eric has wanted to be a police officer since middle school, and after a lot of hard work and study, and we are glad to see his efforts come to fruition, in Exeter, of course. Eric will have his badge pinned on him by his girlfriend, Maria. Caleb grew up in Concord, New Hampshire, where he attended high school. Upon graduating, he went to Norwich University and received a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Caleb became a full-time officer in 2020 and worked for a smaller agency up north. He has numerous certifications to include being a TASER instructor, a field training officer, and when interviewed, he said he wanted to come to Exeter for an opportunity to work for a slightly larger police department that had a great community bond. Caleb will have his badge pinned on by his mother, Patricia. So what we'll do now is, since there are two of them, we're going to do their also at the same time. Our Town Clerk, Andy Kohler, is going to perform those. And then afterwards, Officer Warden's going to have his first badge pinned on him, and then we'll have Officer Daniels have his badge pinned on him. So the families, please feel free to get up close and take photos. And then after that, we can go outside and have photos out front. Okay? Andy?
Gentlemen, repeat after me. Raise your right hand. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Eric Warden.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will bear faithfully.
That I will bear faithfully.
And true allegiance.
And true allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And the State of New Hampshire.
And the State of New Hampshire.
And will support the constitutions thereof.
And will support the constitutions thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Eric Warden.
Do solemnly and sincerely.
Do solemnly and sincerely.
Swear and affirm.
Swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent on me.
As police officers.
As police officers.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And enforce the law.
And enforce the law.
Of the State of New Hampshire.
Of the State of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
At this time, I would welcome Maria. Please come up and interview her. And I would also welcome Patricia.
Again, thank you very much, and we can take photos outside so they can continue with their meeting. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Before you go.
Congratulations, officers.
You're welcome, Exeter. Thank you. Congratulations. Welcome. Welcome, Dexter. Thank you.
Chief, once again, thank you for sharing this moment with us. I know it's very important to us and for the folks that are here and also those watching at home. So we appreciate you starting this a couple of years ago.
We appreciate you as well.
Anytime. Thank you. Before we get to public comment, I have one public service announcement just to remind everybody that the second part of town meeting is August 15th, which is the election for the special meeting, special town meeting election for the siphon project. That is August 15th at the Tuck Gym from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Absentee ballots are available now and will be accepted by hand at the town clerk's office through August 14th and by mail August 15th. So if you're not going to be here for the 15th in person, please get your absentee ballots, and we'd like to get as many people as we can to turn out. So with that, I will move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to offer comment to the Select Board. We do ask that if your comments are relative to an agenda item, you wait till that item comes up, and I will pause briefly for public comment. Sir? Please do so and give your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Ken Damsel. I live at 6 Dewey Street. I'm here to make a comment about how loud they play that music on the parkway. I went down there last year when they had that big sadie one, and I asked them, could they quiet it down for the people that live around here? They told me to get the hate back home, and the manager who was involved in that put a stop thing against me so I couldn't go down to the parkway when they were playing music. I sat there last Thursday night with every window in my house shut, and no matter where I sat, my heiny was vibrating from that music. They play it ridiculously loud for the people that go down there. Why do they have to do that? Maybe I should pay my taxes as loud as that.
Thank you for your comment. Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Are you referring to the festival that was held two Saturdays, Saturdays ago, or are you referring to the Thursday concert sponsored by Parks and Rec?
I'm talking about the one that just went by last Thursday.
Okay.
Before that, it wasn't bad, but once they, once they, Mr. Ruffner gets going with his group, it's just loud as you can play it.
Okay.
And it's awful.
Well, I just want to be clear. If we're talking about last Thursday night, that's a concert that was sponsored by the Town Parks and Rec Department?
Yes, that would be it.
We will certainly.
I've been to the Rec Department twice, and on top of that, one of the parkway people built a brand-new house on Dewey Street, and I don't know why he puts up with it, too.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comment. We'll talk with Parks and Rec.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd like to congratulate you on your offices.
Thank you.
My grandfather was a policeman in town. He always.
Okay. Is there any other public comment this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on. We do not have any proclamations or.
There is a thing in here about how loud you can play an amplifier.
In our ordinance.
It's in our ordinance.
Yeah. I did bring that.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Damsel.
I hope you can do something about that.
Thank you. There are no proclamations or recognitions this evening, so we'll move on to the approval of our Select Board Minutes, the July 10th, 2023. I would ask the board if there were any amendments or revisions to the minutes. Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the extra Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of July 10th, 2023.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes four zero. Thank you. This evening, we interviewed Amanda Kelly for an open position on the Budget Recommendations Committee. If there are any questions or comments from the board, I'd entertain them now. If not, I would entertain a motion to appoint Amanda Kelly to the 2023 Budget Recommendations Committee.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none.
Thank you again just for filling your position.
Absolutely. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes four zero. We thank you, Amanda. We'll see you Wednesday night at the kickoff meeting. One of the fun parts of our job is actually, obviously, what we just witnessed with the swearing-in of new officers, but I think that all of us sitting here will tell you that another very rewarding part of our jobs is to sit in on the committees that we are the Select Board Rep to. We get to see our volunteers work very passionately, work very selfishly, and really do the hard work for our town. I'm fortunate to be the Select Board Rep on a couple of committees this year, but of particular interest is the Treat Committee, which I found out after four and a half years of sitting on this board. I found out several months ago that I was the Select Board Rep. So I apologize for my absence for four years. But the last couple of months have. But the last couple of months have been very rewarding. In fact, when I come home on the second Tuesday morning of every month, usually around 10 o'clock, my wife comments on how happy I am, and I say, well, why wouldn't I be? I'm with Eileen and a great group of volunteers, and we're talking about where we're going to plant trees. And if that doesn't put you in a good mood, then I don't know what does. But the tree committee has only been around for, what, five or six years? They're a subcommittee to the Conservation Commission, but in that time, they worked very hard to get the town of Exeter to be designated as a Tree City USA, and I believe that was done in 2019. Since then, they've planted or have been behind and instrumental in the planting of quite a few trees around town, taking an inventory of trees around town, and most recently, about a year, year and a half ago, worked very, very hard to bring a draft of a tree ordinance to the select board that passed in, I believe, 2021, the end of 2021. Their social media posts are regular. They work very diligently with Kristen Murphy, and they've held multiple events, particularly at our elementary schools, getting kids excited about planting trees. They've received grants. They've done a lot of work, and they've done this under the radar, but no longer because their most recent assignment that they've worked very hard on the last two months was to prepare a presentation for this board to show us and the folks at home all of the work that they've done, their plans for the future, and how we can help them out. And there's a whole group of the committee here. Their chair, Eileen Flahcard, is here, so no longer do you fly under the radar. Eileen, the microphone is yours, and welcome.
It's really kind of fun to be able to do this. Kristen said, can you send me some pictures? Can you give me some stuff to work with? And a couple of days later, I had this slideshow coming at me, and I was like, okay, that's the woman to do that job. She was fabulous. So tonight, we're going to tell you, give you a little background on the committee, tell you about some of the partners that we work with, some of the accomplishments that we've been able to do, and where we'd like to go in the future, because we're just kind of getting off the ground. How did it all begin? My first memory of wanting to do something happened, and Dan may remember this, in 2014, Unitil had, I don't know what the need was, but they cut down 90 trees. And when it started to happen, I got a little berserk, I think is the word. I met with Jay Perkins. We got some information about it. In the next year, in 2015, Unitil had replaced a couple of little trees, and they proceeded to die. And I said to Jay, what can we do? And he said, go out to Stratum Circle Nursery and tag a couple of trees, and we'll fix that. So two trees got planted at the common. In 2017, Jay had an intern, a summer intern, who completed something called the Eye Tree Survey, which took a look at what kind of trees we have in town, and you won't be surprised to know that the majority of the trees we have in town are maples. So we're working to sort of spread some growth and diversity. But in 2019, a bunch of us who had been casually talking met at St. Anthony's Bakery one morning, and we said, we've got to do more than just moan and groan. And so we decided we'll go to the Conservation Commission and get some ideas. We met with the Conservation Commission in June. They suggested, why don't you go before the select board and throw some ideas out at them? And the select board at the time said, why don't you work with getting your Tree City USA certification? It's a place to start. And Tree City USA people were terrific and came, they jumped right in. And so as a result of that, we became a subcommittee of the Conservation Commission and became more formal. We weren't just the tree team anymore. We were the trees subcommittee. But that's kind of how we got started. But before we take a look at any of the other slides, I'd like to give a little shout-out to the members of the tree committee. Some of them are here, and some of them are not able to be here, but Gwen English, Sally Ward, Kristen Murphy, Jay Perkins, Greg Bisson, Deb Twombly, Greg Jordan, Jen Martell, Sarah Sankowicz, Sally Oxnard, Steve Jones, Kevin Breen, Dave Short, Erica Wilson, and myself. So whenever we got together, I would be kind of blown away by the resources that people brought, Sarah Sankowicz and Kevin Breen and Dave Short. These were all arborists, and I was just sitting at the bakery having a cup of coffee. And so that's sort of how it snowballed into where we are now. And so we've got a good-sized committee. We've got nine volunteer members, Nico, who's our select board rep, Greg, and Jay, and Kristen from town departments that are tremendously supportive. So it's a great foundation for where we can go from here. So I'm going to let Kristen tell us a little bit more about, just take a look at all those partners that we have and be impressed. We can't do, we don't do anything without a lot of good friends.
So as one of the staff members who participate in the tree committee, I'm amazed every meeting, too. I think it's an incredible team of people who come together. Greg Bisson has offered a ton of support, free tree diapers, et cetera. Jay Perkins comes with two hats. He comes as Public Works voice, but also as our tree warden. He's our designated tree warden. And then we have many partners, Breen Land Works, that's Kevin Breen's company. He has volunteered his time establishing gardens at the schools. The Arbor Day Foundation, which is the organization who establishes Tree City USA. Exeter TV, Bob Colacki and his team have put together fantastic footage of all of the events. UNH Cooperative Extension, Rockingham County's county forester, Greg Jordan has been a fantastic resource for us, and he often participates when he can in person, or he'll join us electronically. Stratum Circle Nursery, Eileen mentioned Dave Short. He wears a lot of hats in town, but he has provided dramatic discounts on a lot of the trees that we are able to plant, obviously the school districts, Unitil. And so those are the groups. We've had private donations for tree maintenance. You were, I believe, several of you were at Swayze Parkway when they were doing the tree trimming. That was a tremendous amount of labor, and it moved us forward to our growth award because we went head and shoulders above just Tree City designation. So, but it's not just of partnerships between all of these entities. Everyone brings something to the table. So it's all of these volunteers showing up. And so, for example, when Jay and I went out on Holland Way when Unitil was planning some tree trimming, we were able to point to the fact that we have a tree committee, and they need to really think carefully and maybe should present to the tree committee the proposed cuttings. And so that entity being established in Exeter really sways the approach for Unitil. Through that effort, we were able to work collaboratively, trim some trees back, remove those that needed to be, and we also got substantial additional plantings. You can see them, they're small saplings at this point, but all along Holland Way, I think we have 24 trees that were planted, and that was through our partnership with Unitil. So it goes both ways. We have all of these volunteers who are there and show up every single month and bring their, you know, their passion, and then we have the expertise of all these professionals who are coming to the table as well.
Getting our first Tree City designation in 2019, we were celebrating trees that were planted already on Lincoln Street, but it was a place to start. And then in 2020, 2020, right through the pandemic, we managed to just kind of keep on going. We had one lovely ceremony, no kids, but, you know, everybody distanced 20, 10 feet in masks and everything else, but we did it, and that tree is thriving near the buddy bench behind Lincoln Street School. We were able to move, as Kristen was saying, and get growth awards. Some of them had to do with how you involve kids and people and, you know, and some of it had to do with the kinds of things that happened at Swayze Parkway when, I think it was seven different tree trimming companies all decided they were going to do the Arbor Day, could we come down to Swayze and work there for a whole day? We said, yeah, absolutely, sure. So some things like that just kind of fell into our lap, but the connections that were made, and you meet some of these tree company people who were just wonderful, and it keeps on going. Our meetings are always a great opportunity to connect, and someone has a new idea, and you think, all right, we can do that. All right. The Facebook postings, which are sort of okay, you know, I'm getting there, trying to find things to put up there and make sure we don't forget it. But Bob Colacki has been great about posting videos. The trick is getting people to go through the Conservation Commission to find that Tree City, you know, and go down and find a couple. So maybe there's another magic way to get there faster. But we've been involved in the ALY festivals, and we did a champion tree hunt and a bunch of stuff. So those are things that we would like to continue and expand, and just somebody makes a suggestion, why don't you do this? We'll put it on the list. And I think, more than anything, just take a look at some of the trucks and the faces and the, you know, in the middle, you'll see, I don't know if I can maybe get this to work. No, I didn't want to switch the slide. Can I get it to go back? I pushed the one on the top. You'll notice there are no faces on these, on this slide.
One person.
One somewhere, yeah.
I'll just.
Of course.
Now, should we be able to? Can you pull it?
No, we don't want to go that far.
Run forward. Do I consider?
We want to go back, 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 back.
Yeah, can you try it on your thing? Is it operating?
Yeah, there you go.
Back one more?
Yeah.
Okay, there we go. I'm not touching anything now. Okay.
Thank you.
You'll see Public Works guys, some of Jay's folks from Public Works, he said, when we plant trees, I got a crew that knows how to do this. You just let me do it. Don't give it to anybody else.
Yes, sir.
The guy in the blue shirt, Keith, and Keith Schmidt from Lincoln Street School is out there showing kids how to measure trees. He and fellow teacher Katie Popino are part of the Green Team at Lincoln Street. There's also a Green Team at Main Street School, and they have been very involved. All of these folks that you see there have contributed, and they're even smiling. You know, there's Wayne over there in the corner smiling. And they're really wonderfully helpful, and they get kids and people involved. And so we've also been working on, as you can see in the bottom corner there, in the left-hand corner, some labels. And I'm going to let Sally Ward tell you more about labels.
We're so glad to be here and have this opportunity to chat with you about our lovely trees. So I'm going to do a little bit about numbers. In your packet, you have the spreadsheet, which summarizes some of our work. But for the public, I wanted to point out that so far, the tree committee has been instrumental in planting 18 trees, and we've done that in various locations, public locations throughout town, including Park Street Common, Gilman Park, the two schools, the triangle where Water Street and Summer Street intersect, and that's where one of our.
Is that the next one?
Oh. Okay. The, that's where one of our Tree City flags is flown. And so we've done that. Eileen mentioned the partners we've had. I would just add to the list of partners that she mentioned that we do have citizen support and neighborhood support. So one of the tree plantings was funding had come from the neighborhood near Park Street Common. As I said, the funding sources have been numerous and diverse, including the town. Public Works has a budget for trees. We'll have more to say about that later. Citizens, Parks and Rec. And again, I'd like to celebrate the work that Stratum Circle Nursery has done. The discounts have been really important in allowing us to get to 18. We've also tried to have diverse species. So we mentioned that most of the trees in the tree inventory were maple trees. We have planted some maple trees, but we've also expanded to elms and sweet gums, and there's a cherry tree. And the species are listed in the spreadsheet you have in your packet. We also, as Eileen pointed out, in addition to the trees that we've planted, we've initiated labeling trees that are established trees. Most of the ones that we've labeled to date, other than those that we've planted, are on Swayze. And we have some really wonderful champion trees, big trees in Swayze, and we've identified those. And that's part of our effort to not only increase the tree canopy in town, but also to educate the public about trees as a resource. So each of the labels we have, which Public Works has put in the ground for us, includes the common name of the tree and the botanical name, and whether or not it's native to New Hampshire. We like to have native trees. Occasionally, we stray from that. So the status report of the tree plantings, a subgroup of us decided that it was time to examine the 18 trees that we've planted. So we went out on a day that was only a little bit rainy earlier in the summer and looked at each of the trees and established a report, wrote a report about the tree plantings. That report is also in your packet, and I hope we will post that on the website as well, so folks in town can take a look at it. Most of the trees are doing very well. There's no guarantee when you plant a tree. Some of them did not survive, and we've had to replace them. The one that's planted at the triangle where the Tree City flag is, has actually been replaced already. A couple of trees in Gilman didn't make it through a very wet season, so we're working on getting those replaced. So all of these trees in that slide are the trees that we have planted and examined their health, and as I say, most of them are doing quite well. And some of the tree plantings have been part of larger events that Eileen mentioned, and we, our next slide celebrates some of those events.
The events that you're looking at, and they kind of are all over the, all over the place. You've got ALY Festival, which we've done two years running. Kevin Breen has taken several groups in town on something called Tree Walk and Talk, and we're hoping to do more of that. You'll see Keith Schmidt again and Katie Popino down at the bottom with the 2020 effort, where kids had artwork to exhibit but couldn't be there. But Water Street Bookstore gave us a whole window, and we set that up. And I don't know if you remember, but kids had to drop off their artwork. And I don't know if you remember, but kids had to drop off their artwork and leave it in a box hermetically sealed or something, you know, and then it got put in the window. But we were like, okay, whatever you gotta do, we gotta do. The picture of this little girl with her microphone and, and just to the upper right of that, you'll see your select board member getting into it, getting down and dirty. But one of the things that when we see tree plantings, a lot of times it's a formal thing. Someone reads a proclamation. Dan did a nice job of jazzing up the proclamation, but when kids get down in the dirt, when they get in there and they get involved in the actual planting, they remember what they did. You know, they don't say, oh God, wasn't that a wonderful ceremony that we went to? No, they don't care. But if you tell them, we're going to go over there, who wants to get, after the little speech was read, the kids had won this grant. And so A.J. Dupuy, who was a New Hampshire forester, said, okay, now, now that we've finished that, who wants to get down and dirty? And all those hands shot up. But it was a great experience for everybody. And so Lincoln Street has two new trees, a tulip tree and a red maple that they wanted, a sugar maple that they wanted to plant because they need to continue their maple sugaring project that they've been doing for years. And they wanted to be sure that there's another sugar maple out there that's going to keep it going. So, and then you see the, the folks from the Tree Service in Swayze Parkway climbing trees and doing all kinds of stuff, clearing things and, and cabling trees and protecting the wonderful white birch that's down there. Everybody was like, is it okay, is it going to make it? We've got a new kind of cable. We think we can keep it going. Everybody was, you know, watching nervously, but, but when you, when you have an event like that, you start to, you know, walk up and down Swayze and talk to every one of those guys, you get an education. But they were just really appreciative of being able to do this and we were more than appreciative of having them come. So, so that's the kind of stuff that we like to be able to do. And the more hands-on and, you know, more people get to see stuff, walking around town, they see a label here and they go, oh, I didn't know that. Is that what that tree is? So that's the fun part of what we've been doing. That really is fun. Deb is going to talk about a little outreach for us.
So one of our goals is especially public outreach, to educate the community and how do we reach them? And that's why we get frustrated with, how many kids do we have on our Facebook or whatever? So we're looking for ways that we can do that. And we have certainly, Eileen's talked about a number of them, just knowing that this committee exists has created an awareness that has brought companies that come here to do construction work for the planning board or whatever, if they know this committee just exists, regardless of what we're doing, all of a sudden there's an arborist on the developer's site checking out the trees, thinking about, you know, do we need to cut every one of these trees? So when do you cut? When do you save a tree? Those are the kinds of things we're educating about, what kind of tree diaper? There's only one kind of tree diaper that really works and we have all the research behind that and telling the public, these are essential for the life of the tree, is to really have tree diapers around them. These volcanoes on the lower left, what we call, just say no to the mulch volcano. So the mulch that goes up like this on every parking lot you see is incorrect. It cuts short the life of the tree. The mulch should be at the, at the level where the tree is put into the ground, right where the trunk hits the rooting system. And it should not be these high mounds like this. So a lot of education and finding ways to get to people. These tree walks have been great because people ask a lot of questions. But we also want our committee to become a resource that people call us or get in touch with us. Oh, I know there's this Tree Committee, you know, I'd like to ask them a question. So maybe even at the end of this presentation, we'll get some questions about, you know, what can they do? Because there's a lot to be known. Obviously, trees enhance your community, the air quality, the health, the real estate value. There's no question that trees do an awful lot for your community. And I'll talk later about one of our goals that we're trying to reach in terms of getting the, the health and tree index up in the, in this community.
As you can see, there are lots of things that we want to continue. We're going to continue applying for Tree City USA and growth awards. We're going to expand plantings and add more labels. Those labels that are attached to those lovely little hunks of granite, those little hunks of granite were provided by Jay going out to a pile somewhere at Public Works and whacking a bunch of pieces of granite and special glue. And we send them the labels and they put it all together and put them in the ground. Expanding and continuing outreach, education, finding places where we can do that, ensure diversity, improve the canopy and update street tree inventory regularly. And it's not just trees that we've planted, it's street trees anywhere in town. And, and one of the things that we look at is how do we do some of the things that we would really love to do? And is there a way to have a piece, some dollar figure in the budget? When someone says, we, we may not be able to say to Greg Bisson forever, can you give us 10 more tree diapers? Can you bring over another, you know, truck full of mulch? Can you do this? Can you do that? We've gotten wonderful cooperation, but it would be nice to know that there was some, even minimal financial support sitting there. And if we said, we're going to do this special event and invite people to come and give everybody a little tree, it's something. But, but that's a thought that we've sort of dealt with. We look at other communities that have made resources probably more than we have, but you look at Portsmouth or Newbury Port or some of these towns where 18 trees is like, you know, you want to talk 100 trees. Nancy Merrill's book from 1929 or something, they, they, in two years, they planted 500 trees. So that doesn't happen in a vacuum, but we need to think about if we're going to do more, if we're going to say, maybe we, we could eliminate some blacktop. I don't know, Portsmouth Avenue, call me crazy. Eliminate some blacktop, do some barriers, put some greens and shrubs. It doesn't all have to be a tree. But if we had a budget, we could, we could anticipate something. We could, we could, you know, spread the dream around to a different area. So I'm just sort of throwing that out as part of a future goal to say, where could we go if there was X number of dollars in the budget for us? So I am going to turn it over to, who's next? Steve, Mr. Diversity.
As with managing a woodlot in a forest, managing the woodlot in your town requires diversity. And for all the obvious reasons, we require different trees so that there's no monocropping. We don't have mass disasters as we did in the 1960s when we lost hundreds of elms in communities across the North East of the United States to blight. So species diversity is important and also the age. And this right here is a breast height diameter of the trees on the right. That's a gauge of age. But a well-managed town forest, if you will, includes a range of ages, trees of different height and, and different species obviously as well. Thank you very much.
So future goals, we actually have a real number, which I always think is helpful. So this is the tree equity score that you can get online at a, at an organization that goes around really the country and evaluates all these different towns. You can just put the town in and you can get way down at the bottom on the left there where the arrow is, the tree score of 36 is a tree equity score, including things like unemployment and lots of other things about the town. But the tree canopy cover is the number we're looking at. And the lower left there says, we really want 48% of the town covered. So that's things like parking lots, having trees in them, lots of empty spaces. So we, you can see the other towns, Bedford, Dover, Durham, almost everybody is above this 27% that Interior Exeter has. And this is around, we only have the public property. We're not measuring the private property. We have no control over private property. We can encourage, we can discourage cutting, we can encourage planting, but it's hard to, you know, get to the private. So we have, well, we do have control and we are at 27%. We'd like to be 48%, further out from the center of town, 34%. We'd like to be at 48%, as do most of those towns as well, but they are a little bit closer to our goal than we are. So here's a real quantifiable number that helps us say, you know, now we need to do like an inventory, how many trees do we really need? What kinds of trees do we need? We need all different ages of trees. Any tree we plant, we will not be sitting under the shade, practically any tree we plant, unless you're about 18 years old or something. But, so this is our direct goal and really what the budget would be aiming for too, is getting, getting this 48% canopy up.
Before we open it up to questions or comments, I also wanted to mention a guy named Peter Walz. And Peter Walz, for the last 30 or 31 years, has been sharing with, I believe it's the fourth grade, fifth grade kids at Lincoln Street School.
He's down with.
Yes, right.
Right there.
He gets little sapling seedlings, explains it to the kids, everybody goes home. I think Nika's daughter named her tree.
Barbara and she's doing well, I'm happy to say.
Barbara is doing well.
But I'm going to take the credit for that.
Barbara is doing well. We're glad to hear that. The thing that was really delightful was that we discovered that at the end of the Lincoln Street School parking lot towards, I believe it's Ash Street maybe, there's a row of, I want to say four or five really good-sized pine trees that were all Peter Walz trees from 20 years ago, 22 years ago. They're good 20 feet tall. And kids look at that and say, well, you've seen pictures of kids standing next to their tree. This is my tree. I planted it in the fourth grade. Thing, efforts like that, that happen in town and when it gets mentioned and people have a connection, nobody touches those trees at Lincoln Street School parking lot over my dead body, but you know, when you realize that there's a human connection to what went in the ground, the kids who got their hands dirty digging with Dan, they're going to pay attention to those two trees out the back door. So that's the kind of connection, but I wanted to make sure that people heard that name, Peter Walz. Isn't that a great name? But what a sweet guy. And he's been doing that for 30-plus years. So, but we'd like to have any comments, suggestions, ideas?
You know, Eileen, I'd like to make a quick comment, but before, before that, you're absolutely right. I mean, my daughter brought that tree home right when the kids had returned to school from COVID.
Oh, yeah.
And, and she did water it, but we did replant it and it's in a better place and it's doing quite well. My son's older, but Peter was there, you know, obviously been doing it for a while, but you know, when my son was there many years ago and his tree didn't do so well after two months. And my wife and I planted another tree that kind of looked like it and it's actually about 10 feet tall.
Oh, good.
He still, and I know he's not watching tonight, so I'm going to tell this to you. He still thinks that's his tree. It's not, but he thinks it is. And you're right, they take pride in that. I sit with you, so I'm, I'm going to kind of let my colleagues talk, but I would like to just say that I know technically you're a subcommittee to the Conservation Commission, but boy, they do an awful lot of work for, for a subcommittee. I think of them as a, as a committee. I mean, they've accomplished quite a bit in just a short period of time and they've put together a very thorough, informative presentation that ended with some numbers for us to compare to towns that we compare ourselves to when we're looking at other things. So I really give them a lot of credit for that and obviously they've identified that we've got some work to do. I know that other committees do get budgets within the department that they belong to. And so I would encourage consideration to be given as we enter budget season for the Tree Committee to get a budget and.
I couldn't agree more. Yeah, the, the amount of work is just incredible over the time and through COVID. So I completely agree with what Nika just said. I'm not seeing a number. Do you have a number in mind, a figure in mind? Sorry, we can brainstorm over this.
But you know what? It's a good question, but maybe Kristin, you can work with the town managers when you enter budget season.
Yeah, that's where I was going with it. Yeah. And, you know, should we consider them being a standalone or are they fine under conservation? That's something else I'd like you guys to talk about when you're talking about budget, maybe.
We have our ideas of things we'd like to do and don't really know exactly, like this whole I tree.
Want to go up to the mic? That's the problem we have with the offices being sworn in. They were trying to give them mics and it wasn't working.
Is, is, we have items that we really want to do, obviously want to plant more trees, but this tree inventory update from 2017 is significant and that sometimes requires, I think they had an intern do a lesson, we'd need somebody to pay somebody to do that. And also maybe somebody a little more knowledgeable that would be able to talk about, recommend trees and then we would get an idea of sort of the cost of that. So we need to prepare.
So even if we can just maybe come up with a, a budget amount for next year's budget, it can always be increased, right? But just thank you so much for all the work you've all done. It's incredible. And, you know, in the past, we've started new committees and I've been on the Budget Committee before and we've recognized new committees and kind of, you know, having them have their goals and where they're going before they get a budget. And I think that this subcommittee has more than proven their ability to get things done. And so I would like to see a budget, a line item for them, but thank you. It's been incredible.
Go ahead, Steve.
Sure.
Whether we're a separate committee or not, increasing our visibility is a goal of ours. And anything that you can do to increase our visibility will be helpful.
Yes, so Exeter TV, I believe, would be instrumental in that. And, and when I, I'm asking a question about you being a standalone committee, it wouldn't mean that you wouldn't be working with Kristin. Absolutely is, who would, I can't imagine you working with anyone other than Kristin J., Greg, of course, no. I want to make clear, I, I'm not, I'm just saying that it would help for you to have your own committee instead of being a subcommittee. Because right now people would have to go under, like, and find you, right? As, as Eileen said, and this way you would have your own thumb, if you would, you know, your own title. So that's where I was going with that. Yeah.
I just want to thank you for your work. There's been a lot built on that I inventory that was done on, excuse me, under Jay's watch. And I'd let, and let everybody know that on the Tree Committee's webpage, there is a list of trees recommended for planting and the list of, including native trees, which is what I really encourage that. And, I don't know, I don't have anything else to say except for thank you for making us a Tree City USA and, and the work that you do. It's very important.
Thanks for being here tonight. Yeah, I got to witness your work. Yeah, I got to witness your work close, thanks to Chairman Papa Constantis not being available. That was definitely a highlight of my first month back on the board. A quick anecdote, ownership of trees, individuals thinking they own trees. There's a tree outside the bookstore. It's been there for almost the entire time the bookstore's been there. I think it was planted two years after my partner and I founded the bookstore. It's a locust tree. It kind of bends over the street. They were pruning it last year, and as they started to do the work, I went out and I said, "Be careful. This is the closest thing I have to a soulmate in the world." And the guy said, "Stand back, sir. Your soulmate's about to get a haircut." So, yeah, we do kind of identify with certain trees, I think, that we've either planted or are integral to our life. What happened in the 60s and 70s with Dutch elm disease, it was, I mean, it was.
Stating.
It was a terrible thing. I mean, you see old photos of this town, and trees are bending over the roads.
Mm-hmm.
It's a real loss. And we haven't done enough to recover from that. So, I would very much be of the mind that we should up our game and, and put money into this to try to get us back to where we were before that happened. I would suggest that we include our planner, Dave Sharples. He's doing a lot of work with sidewalks, which is an integral part of every streetscape as, as are trees, so let's loop Dave in. I'm sure he has some great ideas. But yeah, I think we need to definitely pump more money into this. We don't want to do it all at once, because then we won't have the diversity of age, but let's have a steady incremental approach that's substantial, and, and we'll get back to where we were back in the 50s and 60s, in those, in those beautiful elms. Thanks for all your work. It's really important.
Mr. Chair, I just have a quick comment to make, and one of our, one of our members has very kindly offered to buy, speaking of Dutch elm disease, he has offered to contribute funds toward the purchase of, of elm trees. And I, this is Steve Jones, and we thank him very much for this generous, very generous gift, and we're kind of planning, as we speak, planning places where these would be, could be planted and appreciated and enjoyed by everybody in the community. So, our hats off to Steve for contributing to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody else?
No, can I just add one more thing to it?
Of course.
I would like to see this posted on, you know, maybe even its own flag, this report, but make sure it's in color in our book. It's kind of hard to read when it's posted. Now, we're trying to save money on ink and paper, but.
Color, color it will be.
Yeah, you just can't make out some of the statistics. Thank you.
So, I spoke with Selectwoman Cowan earlier today, and she, again, she had a conflict this evening, but she was very disappointed. She read your presentation in the packet over the weekend and was disappointed that she was going to miss this, but wanted me to, first of all, thank all of you, and she is also very much behind the work that you're doing and sends her gratitude. So, I think next steps, this is perfect timing, because budget season starts Wednesday, and Mr. Dean will be presenting a draft budget at the end of September, but I think in the meantime, Kristin, if you could work with the committee and work with Mr. Dean, I'd like to see, I think the board here, the consensus is we'd like to see a budget line item somewhere. We'll figure out where to put it. I think, Mr. Dean, we should give consideration to perhaps, unless there's objection from the board, I don't think there is, maybe the Tree Committee being a standalone committee. Perhaps that's something you want to talk about at your next committee meeting, whether you want that or not. We don't have to rush into that, but I think that's something reasonable.
Maybe you can kind of clarify for me. I think part of the appeal of being a subcommittee is that it didn't have a whole lot of bureaucratic something or others in, you know, three-year terms and two-year terms and one-year terms, and you want to just go, "Could we just meet?" You know?
Well, you know, we can figure, it's a good point. You know, the Energy Committee, I know, doesn't have term limits. If you'd like to put together what you would suggest, you could bring it back to the board. I mean, we have to keep it as is until the board takes action.
Okay.
But put together your proposal, I think that's reasonable. I mean, you've certainly accomplished a lot, so it's not like you're not, you know, I think consideration should be given to perhaps being a standalone committee. You're going to get yourself, you know, you want to get your, your voice out there louder, you want people to see you, you want people to hear you. And again, I just off the top of my head, the Energy Committee doesn't have term limits and.
Okay.
And they're long-tenured, like you, and they work hard, and they get a lot done too, so.
Yeah, okay, terrific.
Maybe that could be on agenda item in August.
Thank you all very much.
And then, in the meantime, Kristin, we can work with the, again, social media, but using the website to get information out to folks that maybe have questions about their own trees. Again, the ordinance only pertains to town trees, but there's an awful lot of talent Anybody else? Okay, well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your report and all your work.
Thank you, Kristin, for putting all these, yeah, take some pictures and put it over there.
We'll see you in a few weeks.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Next up, Kristin Murphy is going to present a request for support for another grant.
I'm not Kristin. My name is Renee. I'm Chair of the Energy Committee, and I'm going to introduce this grant for Kristin. We're working with it together. So, the Energy Committee is applying for a grant, and it's a special kind of grant, so I thought I would introduce you to the grant specifics itself and then have Kristin talk about the grant. So, this grant is coming from the Office of Economic Impact and Diversity. This is called the Justice 40 Grant. The background is this. In 2020, Executive Order 14008, Tackling the Climate Crisis at Home and Abroad, was signed into law. Section 223 established the Justice 40 Initiative, which directs 40% of the overall benefits of certain federal investments, including investments in clean energy inefficiency, clean transit, affordable and sustainable housing, and a few other things outside of the scope of our project, to flow to disadvantaged communities as federally identified. All Justice 40-covered programs are required to engage stakeholder consultation and ensure that community stakeholders are meaningfully involved in determining program benefits. So, that's straight off their website. Now, Exeter does have a federally identified J40 community, and this has been identified via a census tract. Our proposal is to help some of the folks in the mobile home parks be able to participate in the New Hampshire Saves Button Up Program. This is a matching grant program that the Exeter Energy Committee has worked with for years, but the matching monies have been a barrier for some in the parks and elsewhere. We seek to remove that barrier for low and fixed-income mobile homeowners. So, Kristin's going to tell you what our proposal exactly is.
Good evening again. Kristin Murphy, Conservation and Sustainability Planner. So, first and foremost, I want to give 100% of this credit to Renee. She attended a Department of Energy webinar on this concept and reached out with this idea of a program, and it's, it's really been very well-received, and I'll talk a little bit about that. So, the concept is this, as Renee mentioned, the New Hampshire Saves or Button Up New Hampshire Program, in order to receive matching funds, you have to have an initial $2,000 investment. And so, this grant proposal would seek $200,000 that we could use for 100 individuals to allow them to qualify for the New Hampshire Saves Program. So, so Department of Energy had a call for concept papers. We kind of roughed out a program that involved partners from Unitil, from the Buildings Institute, and the, oh, Renee, I thought I had it. Rock New Hampshire, resident-owned communities of New Hampshire, so New Hampshire's manufacturer, Exeter's manufactured housing community, communities. Rock New Hampshire helps them secure funding and, and other things. And so, we sort of flushed out a program where the majority of the vetting of qualifications happens the same way an individual applies to New Hampshire Saves. And once New Hampshire Saves deems them as qualified, they would reach out to the town of Exeter for the $2,000 match. And so, we submitted this concept paper. We kind of thought it was like a wild idea, and, you know, it's DOE, those grant applications are a bit atrocious, and thought there's kind of no way. But Exeter ranks in the 98th percentile of a justice community in the state of New Hampshire because our manufactured housing communities. And we received an invitation to apply from Department of Interior, which was really exciting. So, then the real work begins. So, we have some, some work to pull together an application. We've made some substantial progress and are seeking your support to do the official application. The, the application deadline was extended. We thought it was coming up really quick, but we gained a couple extra weeks. So, we still have time to pull together what we need to bring it to fruition. But it's really a simple concept. The beauty of it is, we're hoping that through this process, we also are trying to establish knowledgeable experts in these individual housing communities. And so, we would bring the program to all five communities and then identify ideally a representative who could then shepherd others through this New Hampshire Saves Program, so that it builds some local advocacy, local experience from a neighbor that can help people in the future in an effort to expand the program. Also, Unitil does have an opportunity where if you have additional funding, you can qualify for up to, I think it's $15,000 match, and $15,000 from Unitil. So, add our $2,000, that qualifies them for $17,000 credit. And what this money would be used for is for making energy-efficient upgrades to, to these homes, so insulation, windows, improvements for, you know, heating units, more efficient heating units or stoves, et cetera. So, incorporating more energy-efficient equipment into those homes, so it builds a long-term savings over the life of the equipment that you've installed. So, these individuals will not only realize the $2,000 financial benefit, but they'll receive a savings in their home energy bill over the life of those pieces of equipment that they've installed. So, that's the concept. We're here today to answer any questions. We're still sort of feeling our way through the program, so we'll try to answer what we can, but that's why we brought, that's why we brought partners in, because they know more than we do. But we're seeking your support to officially apply for this grant.
Great, thank you both.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, but you definitely have my support.
Great, thank you.
Do you need a letter from the governing body?
Yes, we do. A letter of support. Thank you.
Mr. Dean, would you like a motion as well?
Yes, I think that'd be great.
Okay, Selectwoman Belanger, did you have any?
No, I'm with Dan. I think this is a wonderful idea. Thank you.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion for the Select Board to support the Energy Committee and Planning Department's application for $200,000 energy-efficient and conservation block grant application, application offered by the Department of Energy.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion, class is 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And really, I mean it, kudos to Renee. I know you all recognize her on a regular basis, but this concept is fantastic and well-received.
Thank you. Thank you, Renee, and I'm going to invite you back up to the podium, if I may. For our next discussion item.
Okay, all right, I thought maybe you had questions on that.
No, no, we, we support that wholeheartedly, but we invite you to give us an update on the Black Heritage Pocket Park.
Sure. Again, my name is Renee, now I'm just a citizen, High Street, Renee Ellen High Street. I included this paper in your packet, but I'll just read it out for everybody at home and here in the audience. For a number of years, a volunteer ad hoc committee has been working on the idea of creating, in partnership with the Black Heritage Trail of New Hampshire, a small pocket park. This park would consist of a bench and a stone embedded with a marker to honor the historic Black community. The original proposed placement on Swayze Parkway has held our committee up, as the Parkway has been subject to two citizens' votes for unrelated issues and is currently blocked for a sore siphon project. Tonight, we appear to propose a location on town property that is adjacent to the Parkway, which will negate all future issues with the Swayze Parkway trustees-related timetables. The new location is on the Water Street side of the Swayze Parkway stone wall entrance gates on the left. It currently hosts a small shade garden and a large American flag. We feel that a bench on one side of the flagpole and a low stone marker on the other side of the flagpole would integrate nicely into the spot with minimal work. We propose to install the stone and bench and have a small ceremony in early May 2024, prior to Memorial Day. The Black Heritage Trail will create and co-host a public ceremony once the installation is complete. In partnership with the Black Heritage Trail, our committee will provide the required matching monies for the large stone and embedded marker. We ask that the Exeter DPW place the stone and the bench in accordance with our landscape architects' plan. We ask also that the town provide a metal bench similar to those already around town. The logistics are this, the stone is placed, and then the marker company comes later to inset and affix the metal marker. The marker text will be agreed upon and sent to ahead of time as a courtesy. The pocket park is smaller than our original concept. However, we envision in the future a Phase 2 of this project that can involve a small forum area just behind the Swayze stone wall in our original targeted space under the pine trees alongside the DTC building. This forum area would be gathering place for ceremonies and education on the historic Black community and more. It would be wonderful to have Phase 2 completed before America's 250th anniversary, which will be bringing many visitors to Exeter, the revolutionary capital of New Hampshire. So, thanks, thanks for your consideration of this donation. And I did attach to you samples of the Black Heritage Trail markers types, so it would be a similar marker. And I can take any questions.
Great, thank you, Renee. Selectwoman Chatterton?
Again, I have no questions, and I'm supportive of this.
Selectwoman Gilman?
No, I've been following this all along, so I'm, I'm up to speed, and I thank you for pursuing this.
Yeah, it's been about four years in the making, I think, so.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say. Thank you for sticking with this. It's, you've hit some bumps and you've persevered, and thank you for coming up with yet another plan to try to get this moving forward.
So, logistically, we're looking for spring 2024, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Dean, we can make all this work through Public Works, I'm assuming?
We will work with Renee and DPW to make it happen.
Okay.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I will, my next steps after I got the okay from you is to go back with the Black Heritage Trail and start working on the text and the application, and we'll work with the Historical Society and the scholars at the Black Heritage Trail to make sure that the text is correct.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Thank you for the update. Thank you for sticking with us, obviously, and you're always invited back for updates or anything you need.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Can I just interject something?
Please, yes, go ahead.
So far tonight, all of these committees and our volunteers, just, it's a perfect example of how our town functions on our volunteers and how this dedication just makes our community what it is. Thank you all, really.
Well said.
The highlight of, of being on the Select Board for me is seeing these things come together.
And I'll recognize Kristin as.
Oh, absolutely.
Wonderful staff person that has put a lot of effort and energy into all these committees as well, so I know, I know they know that and have acknowledged that, and so it's wonderful to see.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Good night.
Good night, thank you, everybody. Bye, go ahead. So to continue the good news, we have our Finance Director, Mr. Stevens, with us this evening, as well as Mr. Dean, to talk about possible acceptance of two unanticipated revenues with the police department. So, Mr. Stevens, our Finance Director.
Good evening, folks. I was going to comment, it's a perfect evening returning a select board meeting. It's only been good news so far.
That's what I had to say about before they left because really, it's been a good night.
Well, I'm truly here for the business of the business. Before you, you have a memo from me to you and Town Manager related to some police department unanticipated revenue that came in earlier this summer. You'll remember that the police department purchased body worn cameras earlier this year. As part of that, they worked with a vendor to retrofit their uniforms for the cameras. As part of that, there was a refund of $5,200 involved. We're recognizing that, or would like to recognize that as unanticipated revenue, which requires your board to accept that.
Any questions for Mr. Stevens?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay. Then if there are no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to accept $5,200 as unanticipated revenue and refund from utility pursuant to RSA 31:95B.
So moved. Second.
So motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Thank you. Yeah. You going to do the next one, or is Russ going to do that?
Yeah, I can, I can do the next one.
Thank you, okay.
So this next item is a highway safety grant. This was promulgated by the Office of Highway Safety, and it was offered to our police department for additional enforcement activities. In the packet, you will note that it is inclusive of DUI enforcement, speed enforcement, driving while distracted enforcement. So this provides additional funds for our police department to be able to conduct those activities. And this is an ongoing program by the, by the Office of Highway Safety, and the amount that's being requested is $14,972.50. And that requires, like the last item, the board to accept this as unanticipated revenue.
Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Dean? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to accept $14,972.50 as unanticipated revenue and refund from the New Hampshire State Department of Highway Safety.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Our last discussion item is a continuation of a conversation we've had over the last couple of meetings. You'll recall that last year, the board asked Mr. Dean to allocate $100,000 in the budget for the purpose of job reclassification and also study of wages. He, along with Assistant Town Manager Melissa Roy and Finance Director Corey Stevens, have worked in conjunction with MRI, who came in as a consultant to present to us several options. At the last select board meeting, the select board voted unanimously to move ahead with one of the options, which would reclassify some jobs and also reclassify the wages. In addition to that, Mr. Dean, we'll talk about this in a minute, the board also was presented some options with our three individual union contracts and how monies could be used without reopening the contract negotiations. And Mr. Dean will speak to that in a minute. But I think the consensus of this board through our goal-setting session back in April and also in our conversation at board meetings is that, you know, we look at cost and what's going to be an increase in the budget moving forward, and we also look at value. And we have a lot of talent here in Exeter. And we've seen some departments, particularly like Public Works, that have constantly had eight to 10 openings. Through the pandemic and inflation, it's become increasingly difficult, not just for Exeter, not just for communities in New Hampshire, but communities everywhere, to retain talent because of what's being offered out in the private sector. And certainly here in Exeter, we take pride in our town, we take pride in our projects, and we take pride in our employees. So I look at the increased dollars here as not cost, but as value. And I think that through my time on the Budget Committee and certainly here on the board, there's a difference between cost and value, and you have to find that happy medium, and I think we've done so here with that. So, Mr. Dean, if you could just give the board an update of where we're at, where we've gone since our last meeting?
Sure. So we, as you said, Mr. Chair, we rolled out a program to each one of our three organized employee groups and offered them, for the police and fire, we offered them a $2,000 retention bonus in each of two years. And both police and fire did accept that. We did have a good conversation about the contract and the rationale why we were taking this approach as far as not reopening the contract, but utilizing existing funds. And I think you put it well, we're faced with a very competitive marketplace right now. It's an ongoing concern, and obviously, we've seen other towns around us in recent months. For example, one town bought out the contract of one of our police officers to take that officer off, away from us. And these are, these are timely issues, and they're important issues to address. So I think, as you mentioned, Assistant Town Manager Roy, Finance Director Stevens, myself, worked very diligently to come up with a program to make sure that our employees understand just how valuable they are to us and how much we are appreciative of their efforts. And I think it was a good conversation and again, a good outcome. So that was police and fire, Public Works. What we did there was grant two additional step increases, so those would be two and a half percent steps, so a total of 5% there. Again, same issue, wages being, needing to be more competitive and emphasizing retention and dealing with vacancies in the department, of which, as you mentioned, we have had several that we're trying to fill. So it's really a market, a market adjustment that we're making here. In addition, in DPW, unit members that are at top step will receive a 5% bonus, and that's not added to base pay. And hopefully, what we're, what we're hoping is that by doing, making these changes will not only increase our retention, but also our ability to recruit outside and bring employees to the town. So, and I think you said it well, Mr. Chairman, we have a great workforce here. They really work hard and they do great work for this town. And I think it's incumbent upon us to really make sure that our wages are as competitive as they can be so we can recruit and fill vacancies to assist the people that are already here with us. So I think this goes a long way toward that. The response has been very positive, I can tell you, on the rollout, so that has been good. And I anticipate that, you know, we may see some tweaks in the year or two ahead, but by and large, I think the, the main job has been done here. So I appreciate the board's support, and I know everybody that we've talked to has appreciated that support as well.
Thank you. And I think that the value in doing this right now, I think it's been, it's been, what, eight or nine years since this was performed?
Since 2014.
It was well overdue, I mean, absent the pandemic and inflation, this was overdue, number one. And I'd add that, for those focused on cost, the cost to recruit, train, hire, and then lose within a year or two and start that process over is significantly higher than rewarding our valuable employees and with the hope of retaining them and having long careers here in Exeter.
That's absolutely true, and we believe that. And, you know, just a quick example, a firefighter alone, just the cost of equipment and outfitting and training and so forth, it's, it's up there. And again, you want to keep the people you have that are doing good work for you. So this is, this is a way to, to reach out and make that, make that effort.
Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, I just, I'd make the comment, you know, we've thought long and hard about this, the management team here, as we were thinking about how best to address the issue, how much cost. I think that, you know, the concept of value over cost can't be underscored. But, you know, as we're going through the process, I thought about my time on Budget Committee, and when we, we talked about investing in pavement, and our people are in pavement, I'm not suggesting that, but we had, we had a presentation where we talked about the state of our roads and what we needed to do to maintain and make sure they were of quality. It's really no doubt, it's different here, I feel. We're making an investment in our people and recognizing where we need to, you know, enhance and make sure we, you know, shore up what we've got. And our people are great here, and they deserve everything they get.
Great, thank you. Couldn't agree more. Any questions or comments? Select woman Belanger?
I couldn't add a thing to what everyone's already said, but thank you.
Select woman Gilman?
Yes, I have to agree that it's an investment in the infrastructure of our town, as, as our Town Treasurer said, our Finance Director, that we invest in roads and we invest in water and sewer so that we go into the future with something substantial. And we need to make that investment now, given the market restraints that we've had or that have come up and the, and our budget being what it is. We have had to make some creative decisions to keep the people that we have and maybe attract some new ones that are looking at public work as not as interesting as it used to be. So I think making the investment over the, you know, still considering the cost, but having the investment more important than the cost at this moment is something that we really have to recognize.
Select woman Chatteran?
I'm just glad that the work with the unions went well, and they were accepting of what we did and appreciative, and I have no other comments, and I just want to say that I supported this wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dean, Mr. Stevens.
You're welcome.
Moving into regular business, we do not have any abatements, credits, or exemptions this evening, so you're off the hook. Permits and approvals, Mr. Stevens, do you speak to this?
Hello again. So we are concluding the exercise of securing lease purchase financing for a couple of items we'll be purchasing this summer. You recall in March that voters approved the purchase of a Vector truck, Article 13, and a Sidewalk tractor, Article 16. Through lease purchase arrangements, we solicited finance packages from two different vendors. TD Bank proved to be the more competitive bid again this year, with interest rates 4.36 on our seven-year loan and 4.5% on our five-year loan for the Sidewalk tractor. Alternative bids for some perspective were 4.93 and higher, so TD kind of won the day. We had a little bit of a delay in getting to this point. As you know, we had debt ceiling challenges in Washington first of June, which rates kept kind of climbing through May and then into early June, so we ended up waiting until the latter part of June to actually pull the trigger on, on the financing agreement or the proposal. So I'm requesting that the board allow us to move forward with the TD Bank financing, and also requesting that, Mr. Chair, you sign the attached lease resolutions. There are two of them, one for each of the leases, authorizing Town Manager to execute any and all documents related to the financing.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Stevens? And seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve TD Bank's financing as follows: an interest rate of 4.36% for seven years on the Vector truck, as approved by the voters on warrant Article number 13, and 4.5% for five years on the Sidewalk tractor, as approved by the voters on Article, warrant Article 16. And to further approve, the select board chair to sign the lease resolutions respectively, authorizing the Town Manager to execute all documents related to the closing on this financing.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Thank you, Corey. Mr. Dean, Town Manager's report, and I'm assuming you'll lead off with a siphon update?
Yes, I can do that. As you know, on Tuesday, July 11th, we had a special deliberative session that was held for additional funding for the siphons project. And then on Wednesday, July 12th, work began on pulling the 12-inch sewer siphon barrel through the 18-inch hole successfully drilled earlier in the month. The direction of pulling the siphon pipe under the Squamska River was from the Swayze Parkway to the mill side during this exercise. Unfortunately, during the pulling of the pipe, the equipment used to pull the pipe under the riverbed experienced a lost connection with the siphon pipe approximately 240 feet into the hole. So that caused some delays, and it's believed that the separation may have occurred with the connection of a piece of equipment used to pull the pipe through the cord hole. Subsequent to that, the contractors met as a team and decided to construct a 24-inch steel conductor pipe and put that over the 12-inch siphon down to bedrock. And the purpose of the conductor pipe is to preserve access to the 18-inch core in the ledge. So on Monday, July 17th, materials to construct the conductor pipe were delivered to the site. And by Thursday, July 20th, a driving beam was constructed that facilitates the conductor pipe installation with the proper alignment and slope. And a pneumatic pipe ramming tool is used to push the conductor barrel into the ground. And once one section of the pipe is pushed into the ground, another pipe piece is welded on, and the conductor pipe is pushed further into the ground. So that is the remedy that the contractors are working on right now. On Friday, July 21st, at approximately 50 feet of conductor pipe installation, the 12-inch siphon pipe already in the hole started to move during the hammering operation. And so as a precautionary step, a camera was inserted on Monday, today, July 24th, and the, that activity showed that the pipe was beginning to squish some. So the siphon pipe was moved a couple of feet just to verify that it can still move independently of the conductor pipe. And tomorrow, they'll have a jet truck remove the soil between the 12-inch HDP siphon pipe and the 24-inch steel conductor pipe. After that's removed, the pneumatic pipe ramming tool will continue hammering the conductor pipe toward the bedrock. So that's a full update, and I want to thank Paul Vlasic, our Public Works Director, for putting that all together for us.
Of course, thank you. Mr. Dean, before you move on, could we continue to update our neighbors at 277 Water Street and the Mills if there's going to be increased noise? I know we've been doing that, but if we could continue that? And also, if we could continue these updates on our website so that folks have access to significant developments? And then third, just again, to relay to Mr. Vlasic the support and gratitude from the board?
I will do that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chatteran?
I just want to, and I know the answer to this, but I want to emphasize it, there is no additional cost for the town because of all these additional pieces of work that have to be done.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And that's pursuant to the lump sum agreement that was negotiated by the town?
Correct.
Okay.
So I wanted to, actually, it's a good segue. I wanted to recognize the fact that Andy Swanson is taking care of our website while Bob Glackey's on vacation. Bob's out of the country for a couple of weeks, and Andy's been the front person on getting the siphon updates up, along with other things, and he's, he's been great at doing that, so much appreciated on our behalf. Another recognition I wanted to make, too, Chris Eaton, who is one of our key players out at the wastewater treatment facility, has been running the facility at two and a half milligrams per liter, total nitrogen, and that's below the three limit of technology threshold. That was originally, as you remember, when the wastewater facility was designed, three was the, the number, right? It was the limit of technology. And Chris and the team have been just doing great work out there, and we are getting great results out of the wastewater treatment facility. So I'm very pleased to be able to report that to you.
Great. So the limit was supposedly three, and they're running it at 2.5?
Yes.
That's incredible.
Yes.
Speaking of our talented staff.
Very talented. So we appreciate all their work out there. They're doing a great job. On my front, the, I wanted to report that Andy Kohler came to me and said that there are apparently three election machines that they're testing in Concord, and they're sorting out which ones the Ballot Law Commission is going to prefer. And once that happens, we'll be back to you to talk about purchasing additional machines. So that's just something to put on the board's radar.
Thank you.
I attended an energy forum with Julie last Thursday at Winneconin High School, was hosted by Senator Al Schiller, and it was a very good event. A lot of good roundtable discussion about energy issues, electricity, electric vehicles, pretty much anything and everything you can think of, supply issues in the state, and sort of how to brainstorm more opportunities in that area. So it was a very, very effective forum, I thought. Some, some bad news, Coast has called and told us that the on-demand Some bad news, Coast has called and told us that the on-demand service is under a threat right now of not functioning anymore. They are anticipating some cuts in their federal funding, so they have asked that we talk to them once again about this process, but they have put that on the table and said that it could be an issue, so something to be aware of and to put on the list of things. The Chamber of Commerce lease is coming due, that's why it's in correspondence, so just to be aware of that. I did meet with Jen Wheeler last Wednesday, we talked about the lease. The gist I got was that the Chamber's interested in renewing the lease, so if the board can begin thinking about, you know, if you have questions about different components of the lease or things that you'd want to see done differently, now's the time to let us know that.
Okay.
Department of Labor did their in-person visit on Tuesday, the 18th. By all accounts, it went well. We are waiting to hear what they have to say. I do want to, again, give credit to Assistant Town Manager Roy, who has been leading that effort with EPW, and they've been doing a great job just getting our ducks in a row, getting things done that the Department of Labor wants done, so I think that process has been very effective. And we will see what they come up with for a report in the end. We had a work group, and I know, Mr. Chair, you were a part of that, we met talking about the police station and the fire substation, so that's just to alert the rest of the board members that we have a small working group right now that's talking about that project and the next steps and how we will go about that. There are a lot of ideas about coming out of the vote, about how to approach that and reach the most people, but that will be a front and center item, obviously, for the board to decide how you want to move forward and what you're willing to move forward with and so forth, so we can get going on our side of the publicity and getting the message out to voters again about that. As we know, it just missed 45 votes short, so still a very valuable project, obviously.
So 45 votes short of the supermajority?
Correct.
A majority of the town's voters voted for the public safety.
Fifty-seven percent.
Thank you.
I had a meeting with Tim Nunes from Unitil, just as a heads up, they're changing direction on their municipal representation. The new person met with me, his name is David, and he will deal with the town on all municipal issues through Unitil, so that's just a heads up for the board. The, there's an issue we're dealing with right now, the rug property. It is basically a piece of property out in the Oakland's part of town that the town took via tax collector deed back in the early 2000s. And the town owns the property, but the rugs have done approximately $250,000 worth of title work and research and meets and bounds, marking searches and so forth. And they are, they have been actually before the Conservation Commission talking about this already, and they are indicating to us that they believe they are owners of some of the land out there. So that's, again, just a heads up for now, we'll bring you more information as it becomes known, but the, you know, the gist of it is if ownership is retained by the rugs, they're interested in selling the land. And one of the potential buyers would be the town, could be the town, could be the Southeast Land Trust as well, but that's just an old issue that we're trying to sort our way through and we have been for a while now. So more to come on that.
Excuse me, do we have resources working to look into it ourselves?
Yes.
Okay.
Legal counsel's been involved.
Okay.
Yeah.
So can you keep us updated on that?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
I will do that. And then last Friday, the last thing I have is last Friday I met with Bob Kelly and Assistant Town Manager Roy, and we went through the water sewer rate study. So you may be wondering where that is, and it's in its final, final draft. And so the board should be seeing a presentation on that. I believe based on the latest version of it, we'll probably look at August 21st to have Underwood come in and give you a presentation on the results.
Okay.
So it's coming. And then the groundwater project, we're still waiting for a draft letter of intent from PEA on that. I've had a few back and forths with Mark Leighton on that and just waiting for that to materialize through their process. They have to go through their trustees and so forth, so.
Can we anticipate hearing from them next month or maybe?
I have been told three weeks from last week, so I'm hoping that we will hear from them soon.
Terrific.
So, and unless there are questions, that's my report.
Any questions for Mr. Dean? Great, thank you, Russ, and thank you, Andy, for covering for Bob so well. Select Board Committee reports, Selectwoman Belanger?
Thank you. So the Conservation Commission meeting was July 11th and I didn't attend because we had deliberative session that night, so I was going by the meeting minutes because I haven't sat to watch the meeting. But Russ just said something about one of the discussions on that night, and so I'm just going to hit the very highlights of this, okay?
Yep, please.
Just under the circumstances, because now I have questions. So, can I just follow up with him one moment? So the exeter part of the property, but not the newfields part of the property is what you were talking about?
That's what we're, that's what we're talking about.
You wouldn't have anything to do with it, okay. So there are 148 acres, 46 of them are exeter and the remaining are in newfields. So just so we have that down, I'm not going to get into the, all the proposals of funding because I'm even confused on it, other than I will say that the Conservation Commission voted to send a letter of support to purchase or at least apply for grants for this. So, and I'll follow up with everyone on this after I have a chance to follow up with Russ and Kristen, if that's okay?
Of course, thank you.
Because I didn't know about that part. Okay, and then I skipped a page, excuse me, sorry, lots of pages. Wetland dredge and fill application for bank stabilization along the Exeter River at River Run at Exeter. There's some bank erosion issues there, a few mobile homes have been removed and digges they should not be put back. There has been no application for New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services yet, so there's still some things being planned, but from what the Conservation Commission heard on July 11th, they agreed to send a letter to New Hampshire DES, Department of Environmental Services, with no objection to the proposed, what's the word I'm looking for, remediation? Is that the right word? Except there was some concerns with the, with limiting the access to that area of potential foot traffic, so they want it to be considered to put up signs or limit that area off completely. And, way too many pages, just bear with me here. And then 24 Part Mill Road was in front of them. There was a sidewalk on July 11th at 5:00. Of course, I did not attend that, I wasn't able to. So that's been in front of the planning board and it's been approved to put another house there, but they've changed their mind about the driveway and now there's some wetland issues. Because when they did the sidewalk, apparently they're visually seeing some wetland that is not being shown on the plan. So that's going to be followed up on. So there was a motion that passed that, sorry. So Mr. Koff, the Chair of our Conservation Commission, was going to draft a memo to the planning board and offered to come to the planning board on Thursday night because they were concerned about the wetlands. And that case actually did not come before the planning board on Thursday night, the 13th, they withdrew it and are at a future meeting. So there's that. And, minimum impact, wetland application for Epping Road expansion, that has been in front of the planning board and there were some voice concerns about that. But Mr. Koff, the Chair, motioned that they would expedite an application and that was seconded, so we'll see where that goes. And then there was a conceptual design meeting, of course, those aren't bonding, those we're just talking through, but it's for Foss Motors to put some pavement down there off of Portsmouth Ave for trucks and possibly some buildings in the back. And then the planning board. We had an exciting planning board meeting that night, it went very late and we had to tell a few of the applicants that we were going to have to push them out because it was, we were there until 9:30, 11:30 quarter of 12 that night. So the Exeter Country Club and Putting in the Restaurant passed, it was approved after a lengthy discussion. One of the most important parts was the discussion that actually was determined pretty quickly with the planning board was that it was an ongoing use. That was a big sticking point for some people, but the board was unanimous that it's been that use. So that passed, and then two meeting place. So we have those housing units in the back and there were the front, the front lot has now been subdivided. That was another lengthy discussion. And the justice of it was that it was approved with a condition, we're trying to watch our curb cuts, we spent a lot of money on a, on a report for Epping Road, and to be considerate of how many curb cuts we have, there was a lot of discussion about that at the end because that's one of the conditions that we had, the planning board had, and that condition stayed in place. So we should, right now, the proposals, the bank's going to go there, and then B is vacant and they don't have a project planned for that just yet.
Great.
And that's it for me tonight.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Wait.
I get so excited. So I took last Thursday off and I did two meetings, potential hazard damage meeting, which was eye-opening. I was on the Select Board before, as you all know, and I had not ever been to one of those meetings, so I'm looking forward to the next one. And I am going to stress to everyone in town, there was a meeting last Thursday afternoon starting at 2:00 on the state of our estuaries, and it was recorded, Exeter TV recorded, so please watch it, it's really important, very important, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dean, back to the hazard meeting, I think moving forward, if we could have a Select Board rep and a backup.
Yeah.
To those future meetings, I think would be important, so that we make sure that somebody's there representing the board, and I appreciate you taking the day to do that.
Yeah, I think that's great.
So, and you had to leave early for an emergency, but both the fire chief and the police chief were, brought that up to me, we had that conversation at the end and.
And I believe there's another meeting in September?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, and there's historical precedent for a board member being at those meetings, so it's not, I mean.
I'll offer to do it unless somebody else wants it.
I'm fine.
Do we want a backup?
I'll be, oh, okay.
I might just go.
No, I mean, as long as, yeah, even if there's three of us there, it's not a.
Okay, because I was just for the, just to follow up, because there was a lot of things that weren't able to finish up that day, so, and it's not recorded, so if, are we okay for all three of us to be there for that one?
Yeah, they're actually posted as open meetings.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
We could just post a, well, we'll figure that out.
Okay.
We can work.
Yeah, I've already taken some off from my.
If they're going, Russ, maybe I skip one, we'll work it out.
Yeah.
But I think that's a good idea. Thank you, Selectwoman Belanger, Selectwoman Gilman?
Let's see, I had an Arts Commission meeting, but I had to blurt out my five words before going over to the deliberative session. The meeting minutes haven't been posted yet, so I'm not sure what was concluded. I know they were just going to discuss ongoing projects, which is a long list. As, as the Town Manager spoke of, I did attend the Energy Roundtable at Winnicott and the people that were invited to it, it was a private meeting, no press were allowed, were all either from a local energy committee or state legislators or local government people, folks, and, and the energy services. And it was interesting, we were broken up into four or five different roundtables. And so we went around and introduced ourselves and everybody was from an energy committee trying to figure out what they can do in their towns. And then I got to introduce myself and said, well, I'm a, you know, select person legislator, I'm representative on our energy committee and here's the things we've done, and, you know, the old solar array, the new one coming in, the CPCNH membership, and a couple other things that put us here and the rest of the folks want to get there from here. So I felt very good that we were, we're leading the way and people are reading our, actually, our agreement with CPCNH so they can model their own application, so we can continue to grow that, that nonprofit so, so that the return on investment for us will be greater as we go along. The Heritage Commission tried to meet, but we didn't have a quorum for the second or third month in a row. I'm hoping that maybe like the Tree Committee, the Heritage Commission can make a presentation, but we can't decide on it because we don't have a quorum to figure out who's going to do what. So we can't take any votes and it's very, very, very frustrating, so I might just take it on myself and do it.
Okay.
The HTC met and we had one presentation from 87 Water Street, they want to make some changes to, on 107 Water Street, they want to make some changes to the rear of the building that's down low, is right on the river, they're taking out some garage doors and replacing it with some windows and a, just person door. And they came with a really nice design, but when we looked at it and given that the back of all those buildings were really meant to be the back of all those buildings, that they don't need as much detail as what was presented to us, you know, there was lots of trim and signboards more appropriate to the street facade than for the back. So we asked them if they'd consider just simplifying it, which would be more cost-effective to them and, and more fitting, more appropriate for, for its use at that edge. And so they agreed they're coming back next month and I, it should be, I thought it was a good compromise, the discussion that we had. And then the other one was someone that came in for, really just to listen to what we do and get ready to make some, or make a plan, make a presentation for some changes that they want to do on another building on Water Street. And again, we just barely had a quorum.
I'm working on somebody for that HTC.
Thank you. I would appreciate some support from, more than just my fellow Select Board members.
I'm working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Selectwoman Charter?
No report, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay, so July, since our last meeting, Tree Committee, we worked on the presentation, so for the sake of brevity, I won't repeat that. Deliberative session was that evening and I want to thank the number of folks that came out. We had a great turnout, great points were made, great questions, and I thought it was well-attended. And special thanks to our town moderator who did an exceptional job, I thought. Swayze Park Trustees met last week, I gave them a siphon update, we talked about some of the trees they want to prune, and also they're going to increase the no dog signage to have something on the, on the pavement. And Mr. Dean alluded to the Public Safety Complex meeting, and those were my meetings. Correspondence, we have the proposed Budget Recommendation Committee schedule in there. We have a notice from Eversource out to their neighbors in the community. Mr. Dean spoke with the, about the lease agreement with the Chamber of Commerce. We do have a email from Hope, Library Director, offering digital conversion to folks who want to convert old VHS and other tapes to digitally, digitally, that's not even posted, but it's late.
We know.
You got it. And then, Mr. Dean, you and I spoke about the Sportsman's Club, can you just briefly update the board?
Sure, so we were contacted by the New Hampshire DES, I believe it was last week, and they have re-engaged us now on the Remedial Action Plan, or the RAP as we call it, regarding the Exeter Sportsman's Club and that property. So it also involves the Blanchard property. If the board, what I'll do tomorrow is I'll, so I can reintroduce you to it, I will email around the Remedial Action Plan itself and give it to you, but basically, we're in the midst right now of beginning meeting with the state, with our various departments, our health officers involved in this, and we are creating an avenue of communication to see what their expectation is as far as next steps in, in the Remedial Action Plan. At the time that we last worked on this, and I will say that DES basically said to us that they've been working so hard on PFAS issues the last several years that this kind of fell by the wayside, but now they want to re-engage us in the conversation. But the, one of the solutions was. But the, one of the solutions was back in 2017 was to fence off a portion of the Blanchard property, known as Area 3. And so we are working on that piece of it as part of this overall schematic.
Okay.
So we'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Okay, briefly reviewing our board calendar, regular board meetings, August 7th, August 21st, September 11th, and September 25th. Of course, we have our election on August 15th, and we also have the procedural defect meeting September 5th, time and place to be determined. Mr. Dean, maybe we can talk more about that August 7th?
Yes.
Get that squared away. We have no non-public this evening, no other comments or.
Yes, we do, the National Night Out.
That's right. August 1st, National Night Out at Swayze.
Yes.
No, no, no.
Townhouse Common.
Yeah.
Townhouse Common.
National Night Out, August 1st, and word has it that multiple board members have volunteered to sit in the dump tank, and I think I was first.
So have fun.
Okay, there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, everybody, good evening. We stand adjourned.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.